We'll be starting in just a couple of minutes. Thank you.
Check, check, check. Hello, Cleveland.
Oh, I'll be able to see you. Welcome to see you.
Hey, good evening. I want to thank everybody for coming to the October 9th City Council meeting. Ms. Rubin, will you call the role?
Mr. King?
Here.
Mrs. Sax, Mr. Cooney?
Here.
Mrs. Wise?
Here.
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Ms. Marshall?
Here.
Ms. Weiser?
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Mrs. Sax?
So moved.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Rock. Mrs. Rubin, will you call the role?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
If everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Hey, we do have the September 2nd minutes. Are there any edits or corrections? Seeing none, is there a motion? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Rubin, will you call the role?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Okay, we're now up to additions and removals from the agenda and referrals to committee. I know that Ms. Marshall had a, I think you want letter E removed from the, from the agenda?
Yeah.
Because it was discussed in Safety Committee?
Yeah. Yeah, we're removing letter E. And do we wait till we get to D to table it?
Yeah, so let's vote on the removal of letter E first, and then we could table letter D.
Okay.
You're making a motion, Ms. Marshall?
Yes, I'm making a motion to, to remove item E from the agenda.
I'll second.
Ms. Rubin, will you call the role?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sax, Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
And then to table letter D, because that was also discussed in Safety Committee? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to table letter D.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Rubin, will you call the role?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Hey, are there any other additions or removals? Okay, seeing none. We're now up to comments from the audience. Comments can be up to five minutes, and if you could please state your name and address. Are there any comments? If you could please come to the microphone.
Our home on Claymore Road, we asked some of the neighbors, so what is it like to live behind the football field? And we had mixed reviews. Some people told us they were crazy, other people told us we could get used to it, and other people said, well, the noise is so loud, it goes all the way to Beachwood. It's not any worse, you know, where we live. The property was beautiful, and we were convinced. However, one thing that everybody told us was Friday night would be a fine night. They'd enjoy their family, no problem. Part of the rules that were set out to protect the community, Friday night would not be any different. Okay, over time, we're living there. Definitely issues came up. We could not find anybody to talk to about it from the university. People told us, this one neighbor that has since moved off the block, that things have gotten worse over the years, and that nobody was really checking to make sure that John Carroll is really sticking to the rules that were put in place to protect the surrounding community. Well, last fall, one Friday night, we were all sitting around the table, enjoying each other's company, when all of a sudden we start hearing loud banging noises. The windows are shaking, literally rattling. What is going on? We go walking to our back window, and we see literally feet, a few feet away from our backyard, a live marching band. We cannot believe our eyes. Friday night, a live marching band. We had never seen that in John Carroll, the Don Shula Stadium before. Figured something must be going on. We asked, this is something new to bring culture to our city. The neighbors are furious. People are upset. The other Thursday night, we went out at 10:30. We couldn't sleep. There were dozens of people outside, some of them with small children, saying their kids cannot sleep. Their babies were being woken up. Last week, I think it was last Friday night, they said there was a massive brawl, I don't know, inside the stadium, outside the stadium, and the Cleveland Heights, University Heights, and metro police all had to be called to put out this brawl. Now, this is the culture they were bringing in with the state. The law-abiding citizens that surround the stadium do not want anything to do with that. We are asking for a few things. Number one, if somebody makes John Carroll responsible to uphold the original laws or rules, or whatever they are, that were put in place to protect the citizens of University Heights. And number two, that these games must stop. This is not something that is respectful to the people, and it is really, everybody is really upset. We have a petition over here. It says, "We oppose the Friday football games at Don Shula Stadium at John Carroll University. They cause tremendous disturbance and distress to the surrounding community." We have some residents here. A lot of my neighbors are traveling right now. We have another resident, Mike Bassett. I don't know if he's here. He also has some other signatures, and we want you to have these, again, to represent all of our neighbors that couldn't be here tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to make public comment?
Have rights to our property, a little piece of quiet. I love football. Saturday afternoon football game and occasional night game, hey, great. But when we become the focal point of John Carroll's new entertainment zone, sign up for that. He's got to cover our rights.
Thank you.
University Boulevard. I just wanted to speak briefly in support of the Washington Boulevard, or the Washington Trail, purpose trail that was being discussed this evening. I looked up a study that was done by Massachusetts a couple of years ago on some of their multi-purpose trails and what benefits they invited their community. They did a four-month study, and during the study, they determined that there was a wide range of economic, economy being generated by the trails. It was a wide range from half a million to almost nine million per path. That's just in the four-month period. These trails really do drive economic activity, because it allows people to, to get to places quicker without having to, to drive and those sorts of things. During the study period, the share use paths encouraged over 90,000 active commute trips, reduced motor vehicle travel by over 700,000 miles. Just a four-month study, but it shows that up to 20% of people were opting out of RIS just because they could finally safely do so. Previously, you know, people would like to walk, they'd like to do those things, but they don't feel safe doing it. And so by providing the infrastructure, again, in a four-month period, they saved close to three quarters of a million. That reduction in motor vehicle traffic led to over $2 million in savings from social costs, including greenhouse gas emissions, and improved health outcomes for people who use parking paths. So I know there's a lot more to be discussed on this item, rights of way and, and traffic and those sorts of things, but I, I just want to remind us that this is not anti-car in any way. It's actually pro-car. We're trying to get people off the road so that people who need to or want to drive aren't contending with drivers who wish they were doing something else. It reduces the amount of stress on our roads. We talked about that a lot recently, how much road repair needs to be done in the city. The less cars we have driving around, the longer a road lasts. As well as, there's really significant improvement for even community health, just by giving people the opportunity to get out. I know there's a lot more to be said on this than I have said before, but at least tonight, I would hope that you would approve the funds to get a real study to see what, what it really would look like for the city to do. Let's, let's not give up on it before we know what it feels like.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to make a public comment?
Yeah, use that one.
Hear me now. Yes, okay. First of all, thank you all for everything you do for us every day. We appreciate it. So I've lived on Clayver before there were even lights, so I've kind of seen a lot of what's happened with John Carroll and all the, the added noise that's going on. We certainly understand that John Carroll is a, is a college, and they have football games, and they, they need to thrive and grow, and we want that. We have to also balance that with, with the neighbors and the neighborhood. What has happened since, you know, since the lights?
Thank you. You could just state your name and address. Thank you.
Lewis, 2548 Clayver. So also coming to support Mrs. Fleischer and, and the work that she's doing for us all, but one other ask to just...
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment?
It might be better just to use this mic. That one seems to be going out. There you go.
Hello? Deborah Silver, 2507 Clayver. Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity. I just wanted to add two more points. I'm not sure if they were mentioned. It was a little hard to hear. One of them is that I, I hear the noise and the beats sometimes as early as 6:00 a.m. When I go outside, I, I wonder why my house is shaking. I'm not, I'm not joking, and I don't live right on the field. I live further down. I'm at the end of the block. And there are many mornings that I come out, and I'm, I'm just shocked that at 6:00 a.m. they're doing loud, loud practices. So that's one thing. And then the other thing is, is that there's a tremendous safety issue with all the cars that are parked right outside my corner on Washington, on Clayver. We've mentioned it quite a few times. Some of our neighbors have even put up cones to block the cars, but there were probably three accidents in the last year of cars turning out, and you can't see because there's so many cars parked. So we were pretty much asking if there's a way to do like no parking from here to the corner, like at least three spots, so we can see when we're making a left turn off of our block. So that's basically all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello? Good evening, everyone. 3694 Washington Boulevard. About the proposed trail coming from Kane Park up to Walter Stinson's Park. Resident of 46 years now. And according to the information that I've received regarding how the trail is supposed to be laid and the amount of money that's going to be spent going into this trail, I don't, I don't think the money's being spent wisely for this trail. I think that all that additional money that you're spending on the trail could be used better in the community. I heard you talk safety first, at the first part of the meeting, and amount of traffic that's coming down Washington Boulevard heading west toward Kane Park, and you have an intersection of Washington and Staunton where T-bones. And I, I sit on my steps, and I see traffic coming from Cedar going toward Kane Park, and there's a stop sign. There's a three-way stop sign there, and the stop sign doesn't exist. I've seen them coming both ways. I've gotten rear-ended three times over the 46 years, sitting out, trying to get into my driveway. There's something that needs to be done to the intersection before you attempt to want to run a trail up Kane Park to Walter Stinson Park. So I, I just wanted you guys to be aware. I think there's better ways that that money could be spent. You know, the road condition on some of our streets in University Heights are horrendous, and it's, you know, to spend that kind of money on a trail, as opposed to getting the streets, sidewalks, and things repaired, would be better spent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Use that other.
Hello? Rebecca Slyfer. I live on Trey Moore. Ladies and gentlemen, I have before you the proposed trail map. I too have concerns that we should not be spending to start $231,000 for a trail that appears to be within one mile of council members today and our mayor. I have started calling this the bicycle boondoggle, because it really seems like one. This study, this drawing, the mayor's rally of the troops, little letter that he wrote to everyone, is not going to help enough of the community to warrant the spend. This is wishful thinking that somehow everybody will start riding bikes, and it'll be a happy, wonderful utopia of bicycles, and we can all wear the little hats. And that is far from the truth, because the study that was originally done by the NOACA team and the Activate team and the many studies preceding the release of this little map were not very good. But one thing that did, that they did show is that 70% of the respondents will ride their bicycles on a bike lane. They don't need a trail. They don't need a bike path. The real prohibiting factor is, comes down to weather, climate, and things that really no bicycle path, trail, Washington, whatever you want to call it, are going to solve for. Okay, the reason people don't ride bikes is not because there isn't a trail connecting their parks. Before we do anything related to bicycles, there are people in our community who have, who have struggles just to walk around, who can't get to the grocery store easily. What we need is a focus on the people who have lived here forever and who need a way to get to the grocery store without risking life and limb because they can't get down the sidewalk or the 2,400 block of Trey Moore. So on that note, thank you everyone who has also not shown support for this, whatever it is supposed to be. Looks like magic marker on a, I don't even know. Anyway, on that note, thank you, council. Thank you, fellow residents. Let's spend our tax dollars where people need them, not on a bicycle boondoggle.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment? Okay. We are now up to reports and communications from the mayor and taking of their, of action thereon.
Yes, thank you. The secret is out. Trader Joe's is coming to University Heights in fall 2026 as the anchor of the JCU Gateway North project at Fairmont Circle. While we've been working on this project since 2021, plans filed by Trader Joe's with the City Building Department a few weeks ago caught the attention of the media, and since they are public record, Cranes Cleveland, Cleveland Scene, Cleveland.com, Cleveland Jewish News, Channels 3 and 19 all ran with the story. We are delighted that University Heights will be the site of the third Trader Joe's in Cuyahoga County. It is the collaborative work of my administration with John Carroll University, together with the progress made to date on the proposed new zoning code that gave the Board of Zoning Appeals grounds to grant the eight variances needed for Gateway North that helped make this possible. My thanks also to former Economic Development Director Susan Drucker, who retired at the end of August for her work on these projects. Speaking of economic development, I'm pleased to announce on the record the hiring of Tessa Jackson as University Heights' new Economic Development Director. Ms. Jackson is from New Orleans, has degrees from Stanford and Berkeley, and was previously Economic Development Director for the City of Cleveland. Ms. Jackson is also, is already at work, project managing the comprehensive zoning code update, and was at the September 30th Town Hall meeting on the zoning code. That Town Hall was a success, with approximately 120 in attendance. After a presentation by Sean Suter of ZoneCo, every resident and stakeholder who wanted an opportunity to speak was afforded a chance to comment and/or ask questions. There will be another Town Hall on Thursday, October 30th at 7:00 p.m. at Dolan Science Center. More information about the agenda and format will be forthcoming. With Ms. Jackson, this administration is still at work on economic development, with one more project that we may be bringing to council yet this year. More on this at a future council meeting, probably in November. Some additional new hires and promotions at the city include John Measly is the city's new Housing and Community Development Coordinator in the Housing Community Development Department. Although we interviewed some quality outside candidates, the inside candidate proved to be our best choice. John has been a housing admin in the department and started with us as an intern in January 2024 while he was completing his master's degree at Levin in City, Urban, Community, and Regional Planning. Congratulations, John. Lenisha Hamilton is the new Housing Admin One, moving from the position of City Hall Front Desk Receptionist. In addition, Housing Admin, Nisha will also resume work in support of event planning and support with the Chief of Staff and the Communications and Civic Engagement Director. Previously a dispatcher for City of Warrensville Heights, no one is cooler in a crisis situation. We congratulate Nisha on her new opportunity within the organization and look forward to her continued service. June Drayton has rejoined the city as the intermittent part-to-full-time full-front desk receptionist. You may know June most recently from her previous return to City Hall as Deputy Clerk of Council. June served as clerk of council during the 1980s. June knows the city, and we're delighted to have her back once again. Congratulations, June. All three are now in their new positions, training up to do great work for the City of University Heights. Today, Deanna Bremer Fisher and I attended the inauguration of Lee Fisher as the 10th President of Baldwin Wallace University. We congratulate President Fisher in his new role. Sunday, I attended the two-year commemoration by the Cleveland Jewish Federation of the October 8th attacks on, October 7th attacks on, on Hamas, by, on, by Hamas on Israel. As of Sunday, November 5th, 48 Israeli hostages remain. We urge for their return and for an end to hostilities in the region. There may be some developing news today on that front to those ends. Sunday was also the Fire Department Open House, showcasing the city's full-time professional fire response and paramedic department with emergency response vehicles on display, tables by related public safety agencies, and a fly-in of the University Hospital's AirMed helicopter, which landed at the wall for open house participants to view up close, and even inside the helicopter itself. The Cav's 216 Sticks were also present to entertain and interact with anyone interested in playing along, with many children of all, as many children of all ages did, including myself. Thank you to Chief Bob Perko and the UHFD for their continued strong work and community outreach. This was easily their best open house yet. Finally, at last Friday's NOACA Annual Meeting and Luncheon, I was honored to be chosen to be the 2025 recipient of the Frank G. Jackson Leadership Award in recognition of my work in regional collaboration over my eight years as mayor. From my remarks when I accepted the award, "The work we do here at NOACA, advancing transportation infrastructure while tackling its environmental consequences and fostering true regionalism, is exponentially more impactful. When we build sustainable and effective transportation infrastructure, we are not just moving people. We are creating economic opportunity. We are improving public health. We are raising the quality of life and standard of living across five counties. That scope of influence is tremendous." As I finish my time as mayor, I never expected this part of my public service to matter to me as much as this has. I came into regional planning through the door of a small first ring suburb, thinking my focus and interest might be too narrow for this. Collaborating with fellow mayors and county commissioners dedicated, public officials from across our region, and NOACA staff, working together on programs and solutions that transcend our boundaries, has been the most meaningful and rewarding chapter of my public life thus far. It reminds us that our local successes are inseparable from our collective well-being. I accept the Frank G. Jackson Leadership Award, not just for myself and the people of University Heights, but for the spirit of collaboration and regionalism that makes our five-county region stronger and better when we work together. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. We're now up to reports and communications from City Council. We have actually a very active, we have very active committees right now, so I will hold any reports until we come to the end of the meeting. Do any other council members have anything to say? Okay, we're now up to reports and communications from Directors and Departments, Department of Finance. Okay, we're now up to reports and communications from Directors and Departments, Department of Finance.
Thank you. Just a brief update. I have concluded a meeting with all the departments internally regarding our 26 budget. I'm working on putting that draft together, which I will review with the mayor and I believe we are currently planning to have it ready to distribute at the meeting on the 20th, unless there's any unforeseen issues. And that should give plenty of time for it to be reviewed and then ready for discussion at the Finance Committee meeting. Just wanted to also, I know some concerns came up last time, whether to do a permanent budget or a temporary budget. That is very much on the table and up to council. I go through the same process regardless of whether it's going to be a temporary or a full-year permanent. So there are some options available that, you know, whether you'd like to pass a permanent and then wait and add more capital in next year and discuss it further then, or just pass a temporary just to get us into the beginning of next year. So we can discuss that further. And I will be sending out our, we just closed September. We're on pace expense-wise with our budget and I will get those reports out to you electronically.
Thank you. Mr. King, and then I have a question too. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have a question. Today, the Cuyahoga County made an announcement that $35 million was going to be sent back to municipalities and school districts in the area. Do we have any inkling of what our portion will be of that?
Yes, actually, just right before I came over, I got the letter from the county. So initially, we had thought it was going to be a bit more. The bulk of that is going to school districts. We are set to get, I believe it's about 58,000. 55, and we will have it be wired, but before the end of this month, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. I know we spoke probably a couple of weeks ago just about the healthcare renewals. Have you been getting good feedback in terms of bids and things like that?
So our brokers are currently shopping our plan. I have a meeting with them early next week to go over what came back for the renewal, not anticipating anything outrageous. Obviously, healthcare costs tend to go up rather than down, so I do expect there will likely be an increase of some sort. And of course, we are somewhat bound in what plan, design we can do based on our union contracts. So if we wanted to make any sort of changes in that regard, it would have to come up during negotiation.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you. Department of Law.
I have no report to see.
Yeah, Mr. Bryan. Police Chief. Thank you, Chief Rogers. I don't see Chief Perko. Is there any report from?
There is no report from Chief Perko tonight.
And Service Department, Mr. Pennington.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Tonight, I just want to report that we are beginning Monday, going to be sending one leaf crew out throughout the city. So we are going to begin our limited leaf collection for the first week, loose leaves on the tree lawn. We'll be going street by street as we can and that will be continuing on through the month of October with approximately one leaf crew per day. We do get our five-minute men beginning for their eight-week period, the first week of November. At that time, we'll be expanding our leaf collection to more crews as personnel are available for that. Beyond that, I do want to report that we will, we did have the divers in the pool before we started draining it and found some leakage that we will ultimately be attempting to seal and that may help us with our water loss we have over there at the pool currently. I will be coming to council most likely later this fall once I get all pricing in for replacement of the two sand filtration tanks as well as the new boiler, as the existing boiler has failed at the pool during the last week of the season.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Pennington. Mr. Cooney?
Great, thank you. Would the report be available prior to the next Recreation Committee meeting that we can share with the members?
I can get you the limited drawing that I have from them, yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Pennington? Very, thank you. Building Department. Hey, thank you. Housing and Community Development. City Engineer.
I just wanted to report that the street program is going to resume hopefully tomorrow with some saw cutting and then they'll be back out next week to start concrete repairs and full-depth repairs. So they did take a little break and I've been trying to find out why and when their schedule was going to resume and they are going to start Monday, or tomorrow on Canterbury.
Question for you.
Sure.
Can you elaborate more on that break? You said you don't know, but what long was the break? Was it during the good weather? Was?
Of course, yeah. They did the milling, they put down the intermediate course and then they must have had another project that they had to finish. So they left the streets in, you know, drivable condition, but, you know, well, just right out here, there's the little, the lips. So they do have a deadline. They do know when their deadline is. So I am, I will try to get a revised schedule from them to make sure that they're, get their work done before that deadline.
So my next question for you is, in our general conditions, do we have liquidated damages if they exceed that?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Mappi. Communications and Civic Engagement.
No report.
And finally, Economic Development.
Well, we need it for the Teams meeting. Thanks. Thank you.
Filing Town Hall Meeting, my first week on the job, I had a, it went okay. Could be better, but we are doing some tweaking for the next Town Hall meeting. I had a great meeting with Councilman Rock earlier this week. We talked about zoning. We talked about some other things, some of his priorities, some of the concerns. I'm working on some resident education pieces because I think there's a lot of misconceptions about how zoning works with the land use apparatus in terms of development entitlements and master plan. And that, just a few special projects with the mayor. But I'm happy to be here and I really appreciate the great introduction. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're now to, excuse me, reading and disposition of ordinances, resolutions, motions, and consideration of agenda items. Letter A, Motion to Authorize the Mayor to Accept the Fee Proposal from American Structure Point of Cleveland, Ohio in the amount of $181,110 for preliminary engineering survey, environmental stage one design, environment, environmental engineering stage two design, final engineering stage three design, and final tracings, and the geotechnical services related to the design and preparation of construction plans for the Washington Boulevard Trail Project. Mayor, are you going to be speaking on this?
I believe we have a representative from American Structure Point here. Is it Kelsey Morton? Yeah, Kelsey, yes. If you'd please come up to the podium. Well, it's probably better to go over to that chair there next to Katie Iconis, our Finance Director, and use the microphone there, given the, given the current microphone situation at the podium. So if we may, like Ms. Morton have the floor. Thank you.
So the proposal for the University Heights Boulevard, or Washington Boulevard Trail should have been sent over to you. That included both our scope and fee for the length of the project, for the full design of that project, as well as an if-authorized fee for any geotechnical services that would be required, as well as the survey fee for Bram Hall to perform the survey. Are there any particular questions that I can answer for council today?
But anyone, Mr. Cooney?
Oh, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I was looking at the, some of the information that is provided there for similar project experience and the pictures of the different areas that are being shown. I don't see anything that's really residential, like going similar to the Washington Boulevard that is being proposed. I see large, it seems to be more like urban business districts or wide, or wide-open trails as opposed to going through a residential district.
I think, are you referring then to the proposal we did in response to the RFP?
I'm looking at the, what's, it's attached to the agenda. It's part of the agenda pack for tonight.
Last portion, let me.
Yeah, it just seems to be because the photographs are being shown. They look great, but it's not really where the trail would be in our city. And that's where I'm kind of struggling with.
So we were trying in that portion of the proposal to kind of share a broad range of our experience. So we have done trail, trail projects similar to what we're proposing here. But we are just kind of trying to show some unique, unique aspects of different projects. I believe there was a boardwalk similar trail within that. That would be something we would use at those bio-retention areas. So wanted to kind of show some of the diversity of the different projects we've worked on and how different elements of those would fit a similar trail to this.
Would you be able to provide an example of a trail through a residential neighborhood similar to ours?
Yeah, I would be happy to pull some other examples and get those available for council, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. King?
I think I can answer that, Mr. Cooney. The first example, Hudson Street Improvements, Columbus, Ohio. It's a 1.3-mile corridor improvement in the Linden neighborhood, including whatever, yeah. So yeah, it looks like it's going straight through a residential neighborhood here.
Yes, and I would.
That's the first example.
I would still be willing to provide others as well.
So, I mean, I'm just going to kind of start off the conversation just in general. I'm just having a hard time aligning our residents' needs and it's nothing about this project, about you specifically at all. When we know we have a lot of other very critical infrastructure needs and to spend, you know, the project's going to be close to $900,000 when everything is said and done. And that's kind of where I'm, where I am right now in terms of we need streets, we need sidewalks, we need, you know, just our regular capital needs and where the priorities are in the city. Ms. Wiser?
This has nothing, matter of fact, I found your presentation to the city on the RFQ to pick up on items that residents on Washington Boulevard picked up on with runoff, additional runoff and issues at some of those. I do find it interesting that we on council are being asked to fund the design of a trail that has what I would call a mysterious grant, little to no public communication and a lot of miscommunication associated with it. After the mayor introduced the motion for an RFQ for design at the June 16th meeting, I went hunting for information about this project. Over the past four months, I have dedicated a substantial amount of my time searching all council meetings and minutes from December 2021 to today. I also submitted a public records request to NOAACA and have had additional conversations with them about the lack of some records that they have reported. I have now reread all state-of-the-city reports since 2020 as well as doing some research on peer-reviewed and published studies on the economic impact of these trails on private property. This mystery grant has an intriguing history. Here is what all that research revealed. I'd like to begin with the mayor's most recent letter to the Washington Boulevard residents where he noted, and I quote, "I'm excited to share with you that University Heights City Council has adopted the Heights Regional Active Transit Plan, Heights Regional ATP, design planning for the first phase of the Washington Boulevard multi-purpose trail has begun," end quote. Yes, council did approve the Heights Regional Transportation Plan on 12/18/24. However, the mayor's statement is misleading. At its first reading at the council meeting on 12/2/24, by the minutes which have been approved, quote, "Mr. Rock asked if the resolution were to be approved, would they be approving it in its entirety or would it be possible to redline item or make adjustments?" Quote, "Mrs. Bremmer Fisher replied that the goal was for each of the cities to approve the resolution in its entirety in terms of the plan, but that does not mean that every recommendation will be implemented or given an exact time schedule for those to be implemented," end quote. So clearly, council asked and received assurance from the administration that the approval of the overall plan did not approve any specific part of the plan. The second reading for this resolution was on 12/16/24 when it passed. Those minutes also reflect the following, quote, "Mrs. Wise stated that one of the questions posed at the last meeting was if a city chooses, decides, pardon me, not to choose one of the items, would they be able to pull that item out or are all three cities agreeing to accept all of the new updates? Mr. Bernard replied that this was seen as a guideline for all of the three cities to follow. It is up to each individual city to accept or adopt a piece of the policy. If University Heights does not move forward on ban on red, but South Euclid and Cleveland Heights does, that is perfectly up to University Heights. The entire plan does not have to be accepted. Another example is if University Heights does not care or want one of the recommendations regarding Cedar Road infrastructure, that would not mean the city would have to throw out the whole plan," end quote. So any attempt to say that the approval of the Heights Regional Plan authorized any work on Washington Trail to proceed without council approval is incorrect and not substantiated. And it clearly notes that each project needs separate council approval. Two, council never approved submitting it for a grant to NOAACA for funding this project. In reviewing all of the council agendas and packets going back to December 2021, a NOAACA grant was never submitted for approval to council. In fact, a grant request to NOAACA for the project was never submitted either. Three, at the 3/24/24 council meeting, we approved the acceptance of a NOAACA CFI grant award for $87,000 with a 20% University Heights match. Contained in the council packet was a copy of the award letter from NOAACA dated 9/3, or pardon me, 3/9/2023 for Washington Trail and Warrensville Center Road. Neither of these were discussed or approved at the 3/4/24 meeting. This is confirmed by the minutes for that meeting. Four, when I discovered this, I submitted a public records request with NOAACA on 6/18/2025 for all records that related to the grant and the submission to ODOT. I have received the records and have done some additional follow-ups for what appeared to be missing items that would relate to the grant and the grant request. Five, contained within the NOAACA records was a copy of the signed acceptance of the NOAACA grant by Mayor Michael Dillon Brennan on 3/16/2023. This is also the exact date that NOAACA Executive Director Grace Gralucy also signed the grant acceptance. Six, at the June 26/25 meeting, the mayor, in response to my question if residents on Washington had been notified about the trail, he said it had been mentioned in the state of the city. I have reviewed all SOCs beginning in 2020, and they're interesting. And it was not until the 2024 SOC that there is an actual reference to, quote, "programming the NAWACA-supported Washington Boulevard multi-personal purpose trail," end quote. I would note the vast majority of University Heights residents do not attend or read the SOC. So if this was a way to alert the residents that could be affected by this project 24/7, 365 days a year, I really do not think it achieved its goal. In fact, it underlines the administration's continuing attempt to push projects through without resident input. Seven, I've also asked the law director if it was legal for the mayor to sign the NAWACA grant, submit the project to ODOT without council approval because it commits the city to a minimum funding level of $448,000 plus any overruns, which is above his legal spending and authorization limit of $15,000. The amounts shown in the documents from the 6/16/25 council meeting to ODOT show this as a total of $433,000 over that limit. Mr. Bryan did explain to me that the mayor did not have the power to commit the city to this amount without council approval. We discussed that the mayor might say, oh, the funds might actually be spent until 2026 or 2027, which would allow submission now without approval. However, a mayor in 2024 cannot commit a future mayor and council without current council approval for a set aside of those funds. The grant from NAWACA still requires approval by council before the trail can proceed at all because council is the only body that can approve that expenditure by majority vote. In September, I did a follow-up with NAWACA since the packet of information I was sent did not include a copy of the grant request to them that generated their grant letter. They have responded, there is no formal submission or request letter that they have for this grant. I find this curious to say the least. This, according to the award letter, is called a TIP, Transportation Improvement Project Grant. I have downloaded the TIP instructions for submitting for grants. It does allow submission without legislative approval at NAWACA's end. How even, even they note in the packet, quote, "If no, project sponsors should consider acquiring it before submitting application, particularly if interested in implementing the project in the next few years," end quote. Further along in the document, it requests the following information for submission. 1.17, provide the following documents in addition to authorizing legislation referenced in section 1.9 with this completed form. A five-year capital improvement plan that contains an inventory of existing structure, its condition, and the projected capital improvement needs and priorities of the sponsor in the next five-year period. Verification of public involvement. A public hearing is not required, but all projects must be presented at a public meeting where public participation was invited and considered. In most cases, this will be accomplished through authorizing legislation. It concludes in this section by saying, important, your application will be returned to you or you will be contacted if the above documentation is not provided along with this completed form. Since there was no documentation provided from NAWACA to me, apparently nothing was sent to them that was required. In a follow-up with NAWACA, although this is listed in the grant as a TIP project, NAWACA claims they can fund a project without completion of the appropriate forms and submission as long as it aligns with their priorities. Ten, this project has been submitted to ODOT as well to get on their calendar for construction, which clearly indicates to both NAWACA and ODOT that the city will do the project and that the needed city match has been approved. As I have noted, this is false. It actually shows for construction in 2025, pardon me, 2026 or 2027. I find it confusing that the city would submit to ODOT without appropriate funding approval. Eleven, one issue with grant funding is maintenance. Yes, the money looks wonderful because it assesses in building the project, but the city has to take on long-term maintenance for the trail or the road. This is rarely considered when we apply for things like this, but it can hamstring a city's budget in the years out when not considering it. Better budgeting procedures would look at five- and 10-year costs for maintenance before jumping to submit per dollars today. Apparently, Councilman King is well aware of the project and knows the city will take on the maintenance of the trail since he posted that on Facebook in response to a resident's concern. However, he did not post the ongoing cost of the maintenance so that either hasn't been calculated or this is another thing that has been kept from his colleagues on council. I regret the administration's handling of this project. I also regret that the mayor apparently felt that the project could not get the support of the residents or project. Instead of taking the time to build support for the trail, he has attempted to commit the city to a cost far above his spending authority in hope, after the fact, that both residents and council will ignore how, without approval of the city's required funding, he allowed the project to be submitted to ODOT for construction. He will use that ODOT has us on their out schedule to pressure us for approval, saying if we do not follow through, additional grants from NAWACA may be affected under their point system. However, since NAWACA has no records of the grant request, I really find that confusing for them to attempt to do. I fully wish, we will also hear about how, quote, "the money is there from NAWACA to build this" and how it might not ever come up again. Once again, the administration spends more time trying to set up a scenario to push council to do something without full information instead of working with council for support and approval at each step. This has led to a lot of the tension and acrimony between council and the administration. And when it reaches here, it is met with a pushback because of that. One final comment. In the Heights Regional Transportation Plan, the Washington Trail is listed as a medium priority. Warrensville Center and Cedar Road are listed as higher priorities. We have grant funding towards redoing Warrensville Center. Why wouldn't we focus on getting a multi-purpose trail down the center of Warrensville Center is beyond me. Instead of asking for funding for this project, instead of pursuing without any discussion with council a pet project, we could have folded this grant into one that could actually provide for the biking community a safe way to traverse Cedar, Warrensville Center, doing a buffered and protected path down the center that could link us with both Shaker and South Euclid eventually, allowing riders to go safely from Van Aken to Mayfield on their greenways through the cities that currently exist. University Heights is the only city of the three that has paved the entire street. Finally, I just cannot bring myself to vote with the design and engineering for the trail at an additional cost to us for over $200,000 when the basic grant has not been submitted to council for approval for city funds that are needed to even provide to begin the project legally.
Thank you, Ms. Weiser. Were any other discussion, Mr. Rock?
Thank you. I actually have a couple of questions before I get into my discussion, maybe to kind of clear things up here. And I don't know who's best suited to answer these questions. The first one I have is on page one of our packet is a set of meeting minutes. And I'm trying to figure out who prepared those minutes. It was the meeting of September 18, 2025. There's no logo or anything. I can't tell who administered the meeting.
Yeah, it says it was a scope meeting.
Scope meeting, yeah.
Oops.
So that would have been a meeting between American Structure Point. Brenda Mockbee would have been present at that meeting as well, as well as ODOT representation, correct, Brenda?
Okay, so who prepared the minutes then?
Oh, those were then prepared by Structure Point and verified with Brenda as well.
Okay, and then I just want to kind of get through some of these discrepancies that I see. On this set of minutes here, item three, the path, it shows proposed path width to be 11 feet. We were told it was going to be 10 feet. So is it 10 feet or 11 feet?
The newer guidance on path width is 11 feet to provide adequate passing distance. That is a somewhat newer pivot in terms of path width. You are still allowed to go down to 10 feet within constrained areas, but the preferred width is 11 feet.
Okay, so then my next question is, and maybe you might be able to help me with this, on your fee. On your fee, you have a couple of different categories here, preliminary engineering, environmental engineering, final engineering. And they're all exact numbers. So I'm trying to figure out, how did you come up with that fee proposal? Was it based on cost of construction? Was it based on number of hours?
Yes, so that fee is based on number of hours and then split across different categories of types of staff that would be working on that. So there are people who do a little more of the production piece. So splitting those hours based on what type of staff is working on that. So that is based on hours.
Okay, so specifically hours, not construction cost?
Correct.
Okay, so that, I was trying to figure that part out. And then you have here additional services on page three of your proposal. There's one additional service, I'm sorry, on page two, which is public involvement, $22,000. And that is for, should the city choose to pursue a modification for additional public involvement services or recommendation? Our recommended services would include hosting a public meeting, including public meeting notification, marketing materials, and meeting follow-up for public comments, as well as hosting a public website with public information. And it's estimated to be $22,000. And that's just for one meeting?
That's for the meeting and hosting the website. The website would stay open throughout the design duration. So that is hosting it for longer than this singular meeting, but yes, the meeting and the website.
Okay, it seems a little high. Now, help me to understand some of the additional services. So not included in your basic services, the 200-some thousand, $181,000. But you have additional services here, which includes services during construction. Do you foresee having services during construction?
So that services during construction is typically for any questions that come up when the contractor is out in the field. If they run into anything unforeseen, things that we can't see underground, that sort of thing. So that is mostly to cover any contractor questions that come up during construction.
Okay, so you would foresee using that service? And then development of corridor cross-sections, is that something we would need?
Typically, that's something that we like to develop to ensure that we adequately show contractors where utilities are, any special grading in areas. I know here, trees are a particular concern and our goal will be to avoid any tree removal as possible. And so having those cross-sections would help us be able to make sure we're staying out of that and avoiding utility impact.
Okay, so most likely we would need that service. Third one is development of a drainage report. Is that something that would be required?
The development of the drainage report, yes, we include that to make sure that we're not, you know, adversely impacting any intersections, causing any runoff into front yards, all of these sort of things that we like to avoid. Having big puddles of ponding on the pavement with the addition of that path. We want to ensure we're avoiding those types of impacts.
So that's something we would probably need as well? Okay, lighting design, I'm not sure if we need lighting design.
This one, no, we do not need lighting.
Additional traffic studies?
No, we would not need additional traffic studies here.
Construction inspection.
This one is typically one that we do not provide, but yes, would typically you do have an inspector on there to make sure that they are constructing it per plans.
And it's possible, since ODOT's letting the project, they would be the construction inspector then, and you wouldn't be needed on this?
Typically, on this one, well, and I guess all of this to say for this one, these are not included in our scope currently. But these are part of the part within that LPA scope. Those services are included in other buckets that are included in that ODOT LPA scope that I believe was also included in that packet of information.
Okay, and then?
So those are included elsewhere in those overall project costs that you're seeing while they're not included in ours.
Private utility design services?
That one I would not anticipate you would run into on this project.
Right-of-way design, guessing, yeah.
This one, no, we are intending on avoiding right-of-way on this project.
Okay, and then right-of-way acquisition services, I think we could avoid that too.
Correct.
Okay, so it just seems like just the first three potentially, construction inspection.
And I think to kind of also confirm and elaborate on those, I would say these are options that you could add. They would not necessarily need to be added, I guess, to circle back and respond correctly there. I do not anticipate we would add these services. We want to make you aware, we are not including these services, yes.
Okay, so we just don't have an idea what that would cost at this point. It's hourly. And you would provide a separate proposal for all the services that are not included in this current proposal?
If you wanted to see any of these additional services, correct.
My next question, I don't know who is going to be best suited to answer this, but on the construction cost, which was listed at 1.6 million, who prepared the probable construction cost?
Brenda, was that you?
That came from the city?
Came from the city. It was in the, what Councilman Rock is referencing is the construction documents. It was part of the documents that I received from NAWACA on the public information request, which is your initial listing of the construction cost for the trail.
Okay. When you prepared this, now this is from 2024, so it's a little older. Do you know what width you use, since we're now looking at 11 foot? 10, I figured, and it may be less, and I'll tell you why in a second. And it listed here asphalt. And then in the minutes, it was recommended that we go concrete. So your estimate's based on asphalt, not concrete, but it's the preference of the administration to do concrete for this project, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, I mean, what's the cost differential between asphalt and concrete? I'm thinking concrete's about 50% more. Okay, so the estimate that we have, the 1.6 million, doesn't include the concrete and it's around 10 feet wide. And then the length, do you know what length you used?
I don't, I can't say for that one. I know I've looked up the length plan and it was about 6,000 feet.
Yeah, and the minutes here was 6,600 feet. So when I looked at the proposal, I'm sorry, the probable construction cost, I was trying to get an idea of the quantity here. So like the very first item is, you know, six-inch aggregate base at 1,000 cubic yards. And to get to 1,000 cubic yards at six inches, it would be a nine-by-6,000-foot pathway. So we're already 600 feet short and two feet short on the width to get to 1,000. And I kind of verified that with a couple of these other ones. So there's a few discrepancies here between what's proposed versus what has already been estimated. So I believe the actual cost will probably be more going at the 11 feet.
I was conservative on some of my costs because I didn't know. There was a lot of unknowns out last year when I was doing this. So I hope I did a large enough contingency in it last year. So I hope I did a large enough contingency in it last year that it could.
Tendency was one forty-five, so close to ten percent. Yeah, and this is no way of being critical. I'm just trying to get a magnitude of cost, size, et cetera.
I also believe that cost estimate includes like a hundred tree removals.
Fifty.
Which aren't going to happen.
So let me ask you that question, because I love trees.
I do too.
Um. What would determine if a tree would have to go or not?
I think how close it would be to the path.
So one of the things we'll look at too with the trees is the location of the path. The last thing we'd want to do is if we undermine any of the root systems and the tree would die. So we would look to align the path in such a way where we could avoid that. And we do have landscape architects on our team that will help us with the proper objects and any, any places that there is a potential for remediation to protect the tree during construction, avoid getting into that root system, all of that. But the goal, the first goal would be to set up an alignment for that path that avoids as many trees as possible. And we would have, looking out there with that fairly large tree lawn, there is a decent amount of space to be able to save a lot of those trees.
So I'm just confused, because if we're trying to align this path and try to skirt around trees, we're really limited because the one end of the path, I guess the side, would be on the right-of-way line, right? You can't go into the person's yards. So you're, you're, the only maneuvering you could do is to get closer to the tree, not further away.
So what our approach kind of in setting up that alignment would look like is setting that backside that we know we have to stick on. And then pushing through that, that eleven-foot width and kind of assessing what we're doing with the trees. As I had kind of mentioned before, there are opportunities to have localized reduction in path width to be able to, say you have some big beautiful tree out there that is very, very close. We could have some minor reductions here and there. We can, we can work in some solutions.
Okay, so the eleven-foot path would not be uniform. It would?
Ideally, it would be uniform, but in sensitive, critical locations, if needed, we do have a little bit of play to be able to go down to that ten-foot.
Okay, now, I'm not an expert on trees. I never pretend to be. I like trees, but I do know construction. That's my background. And so when we set up a site, we know any ground disturbance we do has to be outside of the drip edge, which is defined by where the branches end, the roots are just as long as they go deep. And so the drip edge, if we're going to define that as the do-not-cross line for construction, the basis for that is looking at the branches and just drawing an imaginary line straight up. That's where I'm confused where six trees came from, because I, I know a lot of trees hang over the sidewalk, hang over the street. They get trimmed every few years to do that ten-foot clearance on the sidewalk end. And then the other thing is to get your equipment, paving equipment on that path, you know, those trees would have to be cut back even further, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm not exactly sure where six came from, fifty's probably more likely, but again, we have to go off of that not disturbing the drip edge. So that was that. Trying to think of another, there was another one on trees before I continue. I'll get back to that then. So I just want to preface, I love trails. I'm an avid runner. My shirt today has little bicycles on it. I wore this because I, I love riding and running, and I'm more of a runner than a rider. And I usually run on trails through Shaker Heights, Cleveland Heights, Beechwood. And I'll actually be running my ten-thousandth mile this month, at the end of the month, so really excited about that. But I usually just run on asphalt. So I want to say, if we're going to do something like this, concrete is not the answer. It's a trip hazard, because every single control joint becomes an edge that, you know, the sidewalks, you see them go up and down, and they're all trip hazards. So not only for the cost, but for runners alike, concrete's like one of the worst things to run on. And that's why you'll see me running on the street. So please avoid me if you see me. I'm going to talk about the costs, though. I, I, I want to, I want to see something work, but I want to really digest what this is going to cost for. So I'm going to just pass out a little analysis here of costs. I have the construction costs that Ms. Mockabe prepared. So the first sheet is your itemized probable construction cost. Again, we have to probably look at the units.
Do you?
I'm short one then, because I didn't, okay, I'm going to print it for the table. So knowing what we do know is one point six million in costs for just the construction. And on my second page, and so this is all itemized here, prepared by our city engineer. Other than extra, okay. On page two, I did put together a cost estimate of what the project cost would look like. So again, cost of constructions, one point six million, as confirmed by Ms. Mockabe. Again, we'll look at the unit costs to see if those are thorough. But that's in twenty twenty-four cost, not twenty twenty-seven cost. So what I did, I did an escalation of three percent a year to get us to a roughly around a one point seven million dollar construction cost. Again, that's assuming a ten-foot-wide trail, not eleven, it's assuming asphalt, not concrete. It's assuming six thousand feet instead of sixty-six hundred feet, that sort of thing. So it potentially could be higher than that. We do know that NOACA share is eighty percent of the construction cost, but they're capping it at one point two million, one point two eight million. So the remainder of that is to University Heights of the four sixty-eight. So we know that in twenty twenty-seven construction costs, we're expected to pay around four hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars before any type of cost overrun, before changing materials, before widening it, et cetera. We do know our engineering is one hundred eighty-one thousand from Structure Point for basic services. We do know that the public involvement services is twenty-two thousand dollars. I feel we need that piece. Extraordinarily high, but we do need to have public involvement. We do know that there's additional services, not including the scope, but they would be hourly, so I can't really assign a number to that. And we do know that the topographic survey is thirty-five thousand eight hundred. And then we know that Ms. Mockabe's fee, which has already been contracted, is for fourteen thousand nine thirty-four. So total engineering is two hundred fifty-three thousand eight forty-four before any additional services that we may or may not need. That's one hundred percent to University Heights. The construction cost, as I explained above, one point seven million. And then there's the construction administration fee owed to ODOT. So since it's an ODOT-led project, we have to pay ODOT fifteen percent of construction. I'm sorry, based on the construction, construction estimate, a fifteen percent fee, and that's in the minutes as well from that meeting you had with ODOT. So that's at two hundred and sixty-two thousand two fifty-four. The total project cost, if I were to add up engineering, construction, and then the construction administration piece, we're at two million, two hundred sixty-four thousand, four hundred sixty-two dollars. Again, NOACA shares one point two eight million, the remainder comes to University Heights. So our share of that would be nine hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred sixty-two dollars. So I just wanted, wanted to understand the magnitude of that. It's about a million dollars for University Heights. And that's before additional services, before overruns, and before changing the size of the project and the scope and the materials. On page three, I, well, before I get into page three, let me just tell you a little bit about my background. I'm an architect, so when cost is too high, the first thing we look at is, all right, well, how can we save costs? What can we do to trim this back? Let's value engineer this. We want this to work, right? So I thought, what can we do to make this better or cheaper or safer? And so I looked at the map, and the yellow line here indicates it's going to go down Washington Boulevard to the back of the park, which I thought was kind of strange, because that's like the back door of the park. And then would have to go through a parking lot, which I thought was a little strange too. And I thought, why isn't it going to the front door? You know? So looking at the map, I thought, well, how can I make this length less? We're at sixty-six hundred feet. So I drew on here an option B in red, and it's just one street south. And that's Bushnell. And so it is less of a length here. Think of it as a quarter circle, you know, you have your circumference, and then the interior road's going to be less, so just right off the bat, we know it's less. Didn't measure that. It's about five hundred and thirty feet less length doing an option B going down Bushnell. So I thought, okay, well, that's a possibility. We could, we could save some pavement there. And then the more I thought about it, I said, well, you know, it actually seems to be safer, because on the yellow route from Washington, where the intersection of Washington and Edgerton are all the way to the park, there's four intersections. You have to cross Edgerton, you have to cross Fenwick, you have to cross Bushnell, and you have to cross Sillsby. You don't have to cross Lansdale, because that path continues. So there's four intersections and two two corners of that intersection, you would need like a boardwalk bridge to go over that bioswale area. So alternatively, if we just shifted this to Bushnell, you only have to cross two intersections, because your path would continue along Warrensville onto Edgerton. There's no intersection there to cross. You would have to cross Edgerton to continue onto Bushnell. You would not have to cross on Fenwick, because that path would continue, but you would just have to cross on Sillsby. So it saves two intersections. And then it gets you right to the front door. And there's actually a little parcel of land on the corner of Sillsby and Fenwick that City owned. And then I thought, well, that's like right next door to the park, and if we did it the bike path there, we could even utilize that land and do something special there. It could be like a bike park, or it could be like, you know, fill-up-your-tire station or something. So I thought, this, this seems to have like a little more give, I guess. So then I took it a step further, and I said, okay, well, if we take the path that's at eleven feet and we reduce the width of it, because eleven feet seems pretty high. I just ran twenty miles on Saturday in Presque Isle, and now the paths vary between six feet and twelve feet there. And I didn't measure it every stop, but around most of the park was between six to eight feet. Shaker Heights, median trails, eight feet going into Beechwood. So I thought eight foot was a pretty comfortable width, which is three feet less than the eleven. There's bicyclists that use the medium trail, and then on Presque Isle, where I was at, it's quite populated. A lot of bicyclists, runners, skateboarders, the likes of that. So I thought, okay, if we just reduce from the eleven feet to the eight feet, and we take that five hundred and eighty feet section out by switching to the next road, we could actually reduce our construction cost by twenty-five percent. And at twenty-five percent reduction, we're now have a construction cost of one point two million escalated to twenty twenty-seven at one point three million. NOACA's cap would still be at one point two eight. Part of their fee can be used towards construction administration for the ODOT fee. So the UH share of construction would only be thirty-one thousand dollars. But we would also have to pay engineering, we'd also have to pay, that's a hundred percent dollars, but we would also have to pay ODOT, which NOACA could use part of that cap to fund. So taking a twenty-five percent reduction of construction cost and the construction administration fee, and I apologize, but I also reduced the Structure Point basic services by twenty-five percent, thinking it was based on construction cost. But now that I hear it's about hourly, that portion probably would not be reduced. Ms. Mockabe's fee would remain the same, because that's already contracted. We're at a total project cost of one point seven million, of which our share would be four hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred. It's a five hundred fifty thousand dollar saving. So just taking three feet out of the road and moving it one street over, we could save a half million dollars. And I thought, well, that's a direction we could probably go. We should study that. So I, I don't want to like poo-poo the project, because I, I love trails. I want to see something happen. I just want to do it right. I just feel the, the cost is high right now, the location's a little off, and the width is off, and I don't want to lose trees. I want to discuss it a little bit more. I just think at this point in time, I just want to pause so we can reflect on that and get some more answers.
If I may, I want to clarify two things that I had said in response to your additional services. I took one more peek look back at there. The drainage items that I talked about, taking a look at, you know, making sure we're not causing any ponding. That information is included in the fee that I have already proposed. The formal report is that, that drainage piece. So I would say that formal report, we could forego. Also wanted to note on the corridor cross-sections, we do have putting the utilities within our base map and comparing it to the, to the path location. This additional item is physically cutting cross-sections that we would show in your plan sheets. Again, I do think that that would be an item we could forego on this one. So I realized I misspoke saying those would be needed. The portion we need is already included in the fee. So I just wanted to clarify.
And I appreciate that clarification. And I didn't assign a dollar amount to add services, so at this point, we're budgeting zero. But perhaps we probably need to budget something. Thank you.
Well, I just want to thank Ms. Weiser and Mr. Rock for their, I mean, it's really, the research that they put into this is above and beyond what, what council members really need to do. So I want to, I want to thank you for that. Is there, just, you know, out of, out of curiosity, is that, that Bushnell piece is intriguing to me? Is that something that?
Yeah. The tree lawn width, I mean, one of the reasons why Washington Boulevard was fixed was because it has an eighty-foot-wide right-of-way. There are being tree lawn, tree lawns to start with. So I don't know what Bushnell is and what alternate path for this.
And I just want to piggyback. I recognize that, that Washington Boulevard has a wider tree lawn. Again, that's why I was reducing this to a more comfortable eight-foot width. The sidewalk's five, so it's an additional three feet beyond the sidewalk.
Mr. King?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. First, I just wanted to thank Mr. Rock for trying to find ways to see how we could potentially do this project. I would be open to looking at alternate alignments, widths, in an effort to see if we could get this done. I do have concerns about the, as we were just saying, the width of the right-of-way on Bushnell and Fenwick and Edgerton. But I'm not, you know, overly opposed to it. I wanted to speak to cost as well. One thing that hasn't been included in any of the estimates here is that as this is the, the current path of the trail, about a thousand feet of it, linear feet, exist in the city of Cleveland Heights. And you look at sixty-six hundred feet, that's about fifteen percent of the trail and fifteen percent of the, of the costs. So that's something else that we could consider as, as part of the, as an effort to reduce the cost of, of the overall project.
You said that was fifteen hundred?
About a thousand, a near feet. I confirmed that with Ms. Mockabe.
Ms. Weiser?
In your RFQ response, you actually noted having to put bioswales at the junction of Raymont, Washington Boulevard, and then I believe at Edgerton as well, which even going to Bushnell are not going to go away because of the additional runoff. None of the cost of that's included in this at all, Mr. Rock, because that additional construction is going to actually cost the city. The city is going to have to pick that up. That is not contained in that little fifteen percent of Cleveland Heights. So that's a University Heights cost. I think we need to be very careful, because the bulk of this trail is, is showing in in University Heights. The second thing is Lakewood did a similar thing on Bumps. And the war in Lakewood's unbelievable right now, because the residents have suddenly discovered what's going on. Because apparently they tried to do it the same way that this tried to go through. One of the things that Lakewood actually did, though, was they did a total redesign of the street. They They built the trail in with, I think they did a sewer project all the way down that road. Um, they narrowed it from four lanes to, I think, three or two. They did cut-ins on one area for some, uh, residential parking that was protected. The, the Bunts Roads plans, you can Google and pull them up. It, i- i- it's not a, oh, good, let's quick put this in. But it was a well-thought-out thing that I think had a better chance of, of actually doing. Um, I think the other part of the issue is, and I don't know, I can tell you that a number of residents on Washington Boulevard are certainly not happy that the city has decided to make it more difficult um, for them to move in and out. The, when I went through the peer review journal articles on the value of, of these biking and walking paths, the greatest dollar value enhancement to property is when it's done on the back of the property and usually along actually rail lines and areas where you are not placing it in the direct urban area. Um, the one article that I read through that did a tremendous job of accumulating data and running, running the, uh, logarithms. Um, of course, it was linear regression array. But the reality was that it showed very little, if not zero, when you do a trail like this. So we're not enhancing anybody's property value for sure, but we are enhancing their livability to some degree. And I think we need to recognize that. Um, I am not against bike trails. I quite obviously said, I think we need to really look at putting them where they're going to make a positive and important statement for the city as well. We've got Gateway going in. We have, um, and one of the constant comments about, from a lot of the bikers that I see on Facebook is they want to go to, um, Van Aken because that's a hot place to go right now. Why can't we be the city that leads and does something, especially since we're currently going to do something with Warrensville Center? So I don't know. Maybe we need to rethink this and decide if this is really the key project. I still think, considering all of the thought that went into the Heights Regional Transportation Plan, that if this was the bike trail in University Heights to do first, it would have shown up as the top priority. It did not. It's thirty-eighth on the list. The priority was Warrensville Center and Cedar. And we're jumping it to the thirty-eighth on that list.
Thank you, Ms. Weiser. Mr. King?
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, don't want to be too far off topic with, with Warrensville Center Road, but I had a question for the mayor. I know we've been in the process of, of, uh, design for Warrensville Center Road and there's been, uh, some discussion of some cycling improvements for, for that road. Where, where, where is that? Or where are we with that? I know we had discussed potential for, uh, parking protected bike lanes on, on the road. Um, could you speak to that quickly? And then I have, I have one more point to make.
Well, I think Ms. Mockbee and Mr. Pennington are probably in a better position to discuss that. But, but I will say that that was part of the twenty twenty-three road diet that we looked at with Warrensville Center Road anticipating the Warrensville Center Road project, which, you know, it is addressing, i- i- you know, improving the bike lanes on Warrensville Center Road as part of that, that particular repaving project. So, uh, I know that, that there's another version, uh, uh, I know that a recently circulated a later version, a more recent version of, of, of that project. I haven't had an opportunity to review it yet. I believe Ms. Mockbee and/or Mr. Pennington have it. I don't know if they've had an opportunity to review it yet, but perhaps they have. And, uh, do you have anything, either of you?
There's a bike lane. Yes, there is a bike lane. I can give my own opinion of it.
Well, we'll, we'll look into that, but it was my understanding that there was some, something to address the, the, uh, the, the quality of the, the bicycle lanes on Warrensville Center in that project. Um, but to pivot back to this, this, this topic, um, this, this doesn't, this trail doesn't exist in, in a bottle. Um, there, you know, it, it first appeared in the East Side Greenway Trails, uh, Program uh, in twenty fifteen. And then it appeared again in the Coyote Greenways Project in, uh, twenty nineteen. Um, I, I was part of, I participated in some of the, uh, feedback for those trails at the time before I had any inkling of running for council. But one of the questions I asked is, how are cities going to fund the, or how, how are we going to build this, these trails, these links between our cities? And, um, they said that, that was the big question. Um, grants like these are a way that we can build those. So we have one point three million dollars on the table. Uh, but this trail here, it connects Walter Stinson Park with Kane Park and also with, um, a proposed trail in Wash- on Washington Boulevard in Cleveland Heights, which would connect to the Heights High. Uh, so then you have a safe route to school as well. So i- it's really building into the network. And as you continue down Washington Boulevard, uh, you start to get into the streets that will connect you to, uh, to University Circle. So there's quite a bit of, I, I see quite a bit of value in, in the trail. Uh, it, it ends up creating, uh, you know, we talk about how we need to do more about green space. Uh, building trails is a way to create a linear park, a virtual linear park that connect, uh, multiple resources together. In this case, two of the, you know, beautiful parks of our, of our, um, University Heights and Cleveland Heights. So I, I think there's value in, in this trail and moving forward with it. Um, I'd, I'd like to keep seeing if we can get to a point where we feel like we can, we can afford to do this. But I, I will remind everyone, there's one point three million dollars on the table. And, um, it's an opportunity that I, I, I think, uh, many cities would be envious of.
Thank you, Mr. King. Are there any other comments? Um, before I ask for a motion, you know, I, I do want to say, I think we heard a lot of good feedback from council members. Um, I think there are possible ways that this can be reimagined still, um, without, you know, tabling it all together, um, you know, to what Mr. King and Mr. Rock said. Um, so that being said, um, is there a motion to authorize, um, the fee proposal from American Structure Point? Okay, um, seeing as there is none, we will go to Agenda Letter B. Motion to authorize the mayor to accept the proposal from Bramall Engineering and Surveying Company of Avon, Ohio in the amount of thirty-five thousand eight hundred for survey work related to the Washington Boulevard Trail Project. Who will be speaking on this?
I mean,
If you're not doing A, there's no point in doing B.
That was what I was going to say.
Right. I, I mean, yeah, i- it's, it's split out as two separate motions because there's two separate, uh, contracting partner. But if you're not doing A, then.
Okay, so again, is there a motion to authorize the mayor to accept a proposal from Bramall Engineering? Seeing as there is none, we will go to Agenda Letter C. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-seven, recognizing October twenty twenty-five as sudden unexpected death in epilepsy awareness month in the city of University Heights and declaring an emergency. So a few weeks ago, um, Lou Brosard, who is the President of Council of North Olmsted, emailed all of the other presidents of council and asked for, actually all of Northeast Ohio, to read a proclamation in honor of his daughter, who tragically passed away from, um, S U D E P, sudden unexpected death in epilepsy, and she was twenty-six years old. Um, and everyone on that email, um, all agreed to, to put this on our, our October, um, agendas. Just want to get the proclamation up. Edit like tagged here. Mr. Grind, you have it, officiant, proclamation?
Yes.
That I could read into a minute?
Uh, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, thank you. The resolution, I'm sorry.
The title doesn't have to say declaring an emergency.
Okay.
It's a resolution.
Thank you. So this is a resolution recognizing October twenty-five as sudden unexpected death in epilepsy awareness month in the city of University Heights. Whereas Ohio House Bill seven thirty-one passed by the one hundred and thirty-fourth General Assembly, designated every October twenty-sixth in Ohio as sudden unexpected death in epilepsy awareness day. And whereas that bill is known as Brenna's Law in honor of the late Brenna Brosard of North Olmsted, Ohio, who passed away from S U D E P on January thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And whereas S U D E P is the sudden unexpected death of a person with epilepsy who is otherwise healthy and for whom no other cause of death can be found and most often occurs during or after a generalized seizure and, and usually at nighttime when it's often unwitnessed. And whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention indicate that one in one thousand people with epilepsy dies from sudden S U D E P each year. And whereas when an epilepsy patient is properly informed about S U D E P, they can take steps to mitigate its occurrence, including taking anti-epileptic medications, prioritizing sleep, keeping regular doctor appointments, avoiding alcohol and recre- recreational drugs, identifying and avoiding seizure triggers and utilizing seizure detection and alert devices. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of University Heights that Section One, Council, in order to raise public awareness of S U D E P, hereby declares October twenty twenty-five as sudden unexpected death in epilepsy awareness month in the city of University Heights. Section Two, Council finds and determines that all formal actions of, of this council relating to the adoption of this resolution have been taken at open meetings of this council and at deliberations of this council and of its committees resulting in such formal action took place in meetings open to the public and in or not in compliance with all statutory requirements, including the requirements of Section one twenty-one point twenty-two of the Ohio Re- Revised Code. And finally, Section Three pursuant to Article Three of Section Six of the City Charter, this resolution shall become effective upon its passage by the firmative vote of not less than five members of council and approval by the mayor. Otherwise, it shall become effective at the earliest time allowed by law. So that being said, is there, um, a motion to authorize, um, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-seven?
So moved.
Second, second by Mr. King. Ms. Rubin, will you call the roll?
King?
Aye.
Mr. Sax, Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Thank you. We are now at, um, our new item D. The motion to authorize Attorney Thomas Handkulek of,
Hanselek.
Hanselek of Joseph, um, W. Deemer and Associates Company, LPA, to act as a special prosecutor for the city for Shaker Municipal Court, case number two zero two five CRB zero zero six six nine or any related criminal case.
And I'd just like to note, the special prosecutor we appointed at the last meeting is no longer able to, you know, situation arose.
Thank you. I will make a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Weiser. Ms. Rubin, will you call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sax, Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
And Letter G, motion to authorize the mayor to enter into a compensation agreement with Deemer and Associates for Mr. Hanselek's handling Shaker Municipal Court Case Number two zero two five CRB zero zero six six nine or any related criminal case in the amount of one seventy-five per hour. I will make a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Rubin, will you call the roll?
Wait, excuse me. That's item E now, right?
I'm sorry. Yeah, it's letter E. I'm sorry, I misspoke. Yeah, that's letter E.
Letter G?
That's letter E. It's the new letter E. Because we, we tabled and removed the original D and E.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Aye, um, Letter F, motion to authorize the mayor to enter into agreement with LNE Group for lobbying services for the state capital budget in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Mayor, did you want to speak about this?
Yes, uh, you'll see in the packet, uh, we've worked with LNE Group before. They have, uh, secured seven hundred thousand dollars previously from the last capital budget for the manhole separation program. They have preliminarily secured another one point one million in the federal budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, provided the federal government enters into a proper budget, not a continuing resolution next time. Um, so, uh, this would be to retain them one more time, uh, this time for the next capital budget, uh, work for which is beginning, would be ready to begin imminently, uh, before the end of the year, with the idea being that it would seek, uh, capital funding for the restroom improvement project we have long sought for Walter Stinson Community Park. Uh, they've had a good tracker with, uh, good track record, um, submitting and, and lobbying, um, earmarks for us. Uh, obviously, though I'm leaving at the end of the year, I want to see the city continue to do good things. And, um, you know, the work and the need to do the work doesn't change just because we're having an election. So, um, Mr. Weingart of LNE Group, uh, did approach me about the possibility of doing this work. Uh, I would note that there's a proposed flat fee of twenty-five thousand dollars, which though it's not in the packet, he is willing to split that half this year, half next year so that we're not necessarily impacting this year's budget, or we can go ahead and find it in this year's budget, uh, to do. But, uh, if we want to do this, this is something we want to get started on now. Um, so that, um, uh, we're, we're ready after the first of the year for when the, uh, state's doing the capital budget that, that we've already laid the groundwork, uh, to hopefully secure funds again, uh, from the capital budget for a project in our city. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have a question. Was it ten thousand last year or was it twenty-five as well?
Uh, I think last time it was a,
Two different.
Y- yeah, um, with the federal government, there's, there, there are, there's a different set of rules with regard to um, contingent funding. Whereas with the state government, that's not allowed. So, um, with the federal government, we did, uh, ten thousand to submit, ten thousand if it made the budget, or ten thousand if it made the, um, appropriations bill and then ten thousand upon the, uh, passage of the budget. Um, and that was in the original agreement the first time around. Uh, the first time around, we did not get a, um, we didn't get an earmark, um, there, that we did have some support for it, but due to a staffing error, uh, window closed without, uh, item being submitted and therefore, uh, we didn't end up paying more than ten thousand that time. And then because a lot of the groundwork had been done, there was a modified agreement for less than the full thirty to do it this time. And then Chantel Brown chose this item and added it to, um, among her projects. So that was kind of a one-off, the way it was done last year because. because some of that work had already been done, but some of it was going to have to be updated. This particular one, because it's for the state, it's, my understanding is it's not legal to have a contingent fee at the state level for ethics reasons. So we have to simply pay the amount, whether, you know, it gets in or not. And here they've offered it for $25,000.
Okay, thank you. So if we want to split it between years, do we need to amend the motion, Mr. Brian?
I think that can be done. We can just, when we request the actual agreement, we can request it to say that.
Okay.
If that makes sense, Mayor.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Are there any other questions? I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to enter an agreement with LNE Group for lobbying services. Is there a second?
A second.
Hey, Ms. Rubin, will you call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Thank you. Letter G, Motion Authorizing the Purchase of One Kubota Utility Vehicle from Mentor MFG in the Amount Not to Exceed $23,129.20.
Vice Mayor, Members of Council, this is our annual purchase of a Kubota refuse vehicle for use in our backyard garbage collection. Currently, our oldest Kubota is a 2017. It's beyond the six-year useful life. This would provide us with the basic utility vehicle, allowing our maintenance shop with our mechanics to retrofit it to meet our needs for rubbish collection. This, we did attempt to solicit bids for this, as I came to you earlier this year for doing so. Did not receive any bids. However, we did ultimately get a quote from Mentor MFG, similar to what we did the last year for purchase of the vehicle in the amount of $23,129.20. This is approximately $1,500 more than what the price was for last year's Kubota that we also received from Mentor MFG. At this point, I would ask council authorize this motion to allow us to purchase our refuse vehicle.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Ms. Weiser?
So what we did, we authorized you going out for bid.
Yes.
And no bids came in.
Correct.
And last year, we only spent, what do you, what do you mean?
$22,000 and some odd dollars last year.
So this is not $15,000 more. It's...
No, it's about $1,500 more.
$1,500. Thank you for the clarification. Okay.
Hey, is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second. Ms. Rubin, will you call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Hey, is there a need for an executive session?
There's not.
Hey, we are now up to Standing Committees, Building and Housing.
There will be a Building and Housing Meeting at 6:00 PM before the next council meeting. We're going to continue talking about potentially dealing with the sidewalks.
Thank you, Ms. Weiser. Community Outreach, Mr. King?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The new camera for our streaming system arrived. I met Starfish Tuesday morning here to have it installed. Unfortunately, he didn't arrive with all the equipment he needed. We have another appointment set up for tomorrow morning to have that installed. Thank you.
Thank you. Economic Development?
Yes, we will have a meeting on Monday, October 13, at 6 o'clock in this room, to go over the zoning, comprehensive zoning redo. It's not on the website yet, so I just want to make sure that gets on there for the 13th. And the agenda will be to give feedback on, or to discuss the community feedback from the Town Hall. I think I really just want to digest what we heard on September 30 at the mayor's town hall meeting. There were quite a few residents that had spoke, both in favor and not in favor, and gave some suggestions on how to move forward and some things to consider. And I took pretty good notes, and I just want to take that meeting as an opportunity to digest what we heard and take a look at that feedback. And then we will be meeting on the second Monday of every month going forward. And so that next meeting would be November 10, and that's where we'll start looking at the new draft from September.
Thank you, Mr. Rock. Finance, we do have a meeting on October 27 where we will be discussing the Street Program. Ms. Mockbee is preparing some information. We'll be going over third quarter financials as well and then making an outline for the budget procedure. Recreation?
Thank you. The next Recreation Committee meeting is on Wednesday, October 29, looking at revenue expenses from the pool and also other projects that have been discussed previously.
Thank you. And Safety?
No report, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Service and Utilities, does anyone have report from the Sacks? Okay, Committee of the Whole, there is no report. Report of Special Committees and the Taking of Action?
Yeah, I could just comment on the Facilities Committee. We met Tuesday, and we had a presentation from FGMA, who gave us some updates on the potential site plans. There are three different options for the facilities. One option, having service here at Wiley. The other two options, different configurations of the site, terms of phasing and where things would go. We had a lot to talk about, and the committee preferred Option 1 of the options that were presented. And at this point, we're going to just take a pause. The next steps would be to look at some space planning of the different facilities. But at this point, we're just going to take a pause since we're going to have a new administration in January, and it's just a few weeks away before the election, and we'll have a better outcome, understanding of the outcome, you know, what that vision will be in the future. So that will continue soon into the future.
Okay, thank you. And also, the CIC is meeting on 10/21. I know that they have some resident programming that they will be offering, so that will be discussed on how to roll that out. Is there any unfinished or miscellaneous business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Secuted.
Ms. Rubin, will you call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Wise?
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to thank everybody for attending.